All right, this is Robert Rendon, Capital Outlay Committee Chairman. I'll call the order of the meeting of Tuesday, February fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-two. It is five thirty-seven P M. Present are Kenton Chakto, Selectman Brenda Herbeck, Member at Large, Mary Hathaway, Town Treasurer, Tim Alvin, Town Accountant, Mike Mullin, Town Administrator, and myself, Robert Rendon, representing the FinCom, as well as the Chairman of the Capital Outlay Committee. Also present at this time are Rob Baxter, our Business Manager for the Dyson Rehoboth Regional School District, and Dr. Azar, the Superintendent of Dyson Rehoboth Regional School District. At this point, we will please rise to pledge allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. All right, with that, we'll go right into the heart of the meeting, which is to take a look at the regional school districts' capital projects for FY twenty-three and what they have submitted to date up on the screen there. I think we do have one of these miscategorized, and we'll just hear from the regional school district. I believe it's the ADA access to state.
That should be, that should be DMS.
DMS, okay, thank you. That's why I assumed that, you know, I know there's a lift at the high school already. You know, I could be, I'd see the middle school there. Thank you. Okay, so the way we've been kind of running through these things is, you know, all of your requests are pretty clear cut of what they are. What we want to know is what's your priority? So the ask from the town of Dyson over the past few years has typically been somewhere in that two hundred and fifty to four hundred thousand dollar range. This year, the ask is for six hundred thousand. We have to balance that with everything else that the town has going on. So what we want to get a feel for is what's your priority in terms of these projects? And since there's, I believe, six of them listed here, we'll just go one through six. What needs to get done first?
If I may, since we prepared this, let me slide over. Since we prepared this, we've we've shuffled our priorities. We have, you know, the superintendent convened an advisory committee for facilities, and we would like to kind of replace this with really just two things. And then, just at the top of the list, the first would be a hundred and fifty thousand dollars for study, if you will, that's probably not the right word, but the but the stage, the first stage towards developing a solution for the enrollment issue at the Dyson campus. So and yeah, yeah, that's a good way to put it, yep. And then the second would be, although it doesn't really and then the second would be the track and tennis court revisions or upgrades and repairs at the high school. They, and just two, and then I'll just keep it quick. The, the track, the repairs to the, to the track and the tennis court it's proposed, it would not affect the town of Dyson or and future assessment. We, we would propose to the school committee that when our access gets certified from the state this year, that we would, that they would appropriate a portion of that, roughly four hundred thousand dollars towards the repair of the track that we could track and the tennis court that we could get started on in fiscal twenty-two. Ideally, we would like to do that fiscal twenty-two, that that's the first thing.
So Rob, excuse me, Mr. Mullin, if I, if I could just interject quickly?
Sure.
Can everybody hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay, so the idea that we have floated around a little bit has a lot to do with the FY twenty-two budget that we were going to look to amend it upwards by the amount of what the track and tennis court repairs would look like. And we're looking at about four hundred and sixty-four thousand dollars. So I don't know if we, we are dovetailing that, Rob, into two thousand and twenty-three, but looking at two thousand and twenty-two to amend that budget.
Correct, Doc, absolutely correct, yes. You know, just to be clear, and then the four hundred thousand dollars obviously would be split between the two towns, right? But it wouldn't even be split, it wouldn't affect your appropriation?
It's just coming from E and D.
Yeah, it would not affect your appropriation, yes.
So there's no, so even though you're gonna be adjusting the budget, it's not really an impact to the town, either town, because it's coming from E and D. You're just waiting for certification for it.
Exactly right, exactly right.
So what we're looking at for twenty-three then really is the hundred and fifty K for the feasibility study.
Correct.
And is that it then?
That's it, because as we went through, so, so that and Donkey can jump in, but as we are preparing our operational and capital proposed preliminary budget to the school committee, and when we looked at the other, the pressures on the you know, the other basically inflationary pressures on our budget, we've stripped everything else out, and unless the school committee was aware of the, the needs, decides to add to the, to our request, our plan is at least to just ask for the you know, the study to get started on the you know, some sort of, to address the enrollment issue at the, at the Dyson campus.
Okay.
So that would be, those are the plans. And then, yeah, that's, that's pretty much it, and we can fix the other things as we go along. You know, we will, but really, that's, that's where we're at. Donkey, wait, can you you know, if I'm misspeaking, or if you want to add, jump in, but I think that's.
Yeah, that, so, so what we're hoping for is that we, we're going to have a discussion with our school committee about the feasibility study going forward, particularly on the, on the, well, obviously on the Dyson side. Looking at that NASDAQ report that we had done several years ago, there does not seem to be any enrollment issues on the Rehoboth side. Both Beckwith Middle School and the Palmer River Elementary School, and obviously the high school, they all have areas that we could increase enrollment without introducing any brick or mortar, any modules, anything like that. The concern has always been on the Dyson side since, since I've been superintendent. As you know, we've done a lot of revisions, add-ons. You know, you folks stepped up to the plate three years ago with the modules, and you know, we're not sure where those fourth graders would have been had you not done that. So, so to, to, to you folks, that's just hats off to you folks. But the reason why we believe the feasibility study for enrollment and building needs needs, we need to at least have, hopefully, an appropriation for that one fifty, you know, should the school committee approve what, what we're hoping to put forward. It was an advisory group of parents, and it was a, it was a smaller scale advisory group to the superintendent. And then we're going to move forward with the recommendation from that committee. I believe, Rob, there was about ten, twelve or so people on that committee. And then we're going to recommend to the school committee to put together a subcommittee for facilities that will ultimately include folks from both Dyson and Rehoboth. You know, similar to, Rob, some of the things we tried to do prior to the modules to get everybody on board and then to give recommendations for that. If the one, if the hundred and fifty thousand dollars is appropriated, then we can move forward on that. In the event it's not appropriated, then hopefully the committee will come up with some alternatives going forward, and hopefully not, no, no sticker shock, you know, like what we, both towns are dealing with, with BP, but that's a whole nother area that we'll, we'll, we'll have to tackle as we go forward. So I think that's about it from the school district standpoint. We have not had a chance to explain to our school committee yet. The tangliness of this meeting has been very good. As you know, the school committee is preoccupied tonight. Hopefully, I have my fingers crossed that they can come up with a suitable replacement for yours truly, so I can go off into the sunset guilt-free that the school district's in good hands. But this hopefully will give everyone a, a start as to what the needs are for the Dyson enrollment issues that we've been grappling with for a while. So thank you for hearing us out tonight, and we're here for the duration for any questions.
Thank you, Dr. Azar. Any questions from Capital Outlay Committee members?
It seems pretty straightforward. I mean, the feasibility study has been talked about for like last few years now. So I mean, I think the fact that we're here, and the fact that we have a number in front of us, I mean, I think it's a good thing in terms of planning, of planning for the future.
Right, and quite honestly, with what was being asked for here, why start on those projects if this feasibility study proves out that we should do something totally different?
Exactly right, exactly right.
Yeah, okay. No other questions? That's easy. Dr. Azar, Mr. Baxter, thank you for your presence. You don't have to hang out if you don't want to. It is a, it is a public meeting, and you're more than welcome to, but.
I'm, I'm headed to, I'm headed to Angelo's if, if, if you don't mind.
Give them heck for taking the meat ravioli off the menu.
Just, if I may, Rob, just, you know, I think it's just absolutely fantastic that you folks put this Capital Outlay Committee together. And, and as Rob knows, we've, we've been at numerous meetings trying to figure out what the future holds and what, what we need, and what a great opportunity you folks in Dyson are doing for, for, for your folks. And that impacts our kids, so, you know, we're, we're excited about this going forward, and yeah, thank you, thank you for having us.
Absolutely, and you know, and our only ask, you know, from, from the school district and your, your successor is, is as you start identifying future projects, that you just kind of keep us in the loop. So, you know, for, the track is a great example. If, if this is all shifting, we don't have to wait for a meeting to do this. Just, you know, contact Mr. Mullin, tell him you're taking these ones off the table, you're gonna replace them with these requests. And if you know something that's gonna be happening four years from now, let's get it in front of this committee right now, today.
Will do.
State regulations change, we have to do something different. Let's say, heaven forbid, we have to put in metal detectors, you know, and you know that that's, we gotta, that's mandated to go in four years from now. Let's figure out what the cost is gonna be and get it, get it out in front of us so we can start thinking about how we're gonna fund those types of projects.
Absolutely, and I'm grateful. Mr. Mullin and I have very good working relationship, and so I has no, no issues with that.
No, thank you.
Wonderful.
Appreciate it.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, thank you for having me.
Have a great night, guys, thank you.
You too, enjoy the meeting. Okay, so that was, should have been the last of the requests.
Yes.
And then that leaves us, where?
The ratings.
Discussion rating of the projects.
I'm there with me.
Did you do something fun?
Did I do something fun?
Yeah.
Like what?
I, I don't know, I'm hoping you did something fun.
Like a game?
Like, like brought some like index cards with them so we could like move them around to play with them.
So I printed out.
Or like some numbers so we could hold them up.
Alright, so I printed out the rating sheets, but I think you just jinxed me, Robert, because so, so they're not green now? I can run back and grab them. That really goes against my ears.
Thank you for that.
Thank you.
Nice to meet you.
Thanks, Rob. Yeah, I can run back and get them in a minute, if you don't mind, I'm sorry.
Or we can just pull up electronic ones and throw them off there.
Yeah, I just have to.
I'm fine with that.
Just have to grab them. They don't, on my computer, here. One second. Just, give me one minute, I can't believe I did that.
Well, you know what, we can go ahead and recess for five minutes, and then this committee can take the time to read through your minutes.
Perfect, that sounds good.
And then, so I'll entertain a motion to recess.
Second?
Second. I'll call those in favor. I just have it. Okay, recess for, we'll, we'll call it till Mike hears. Reconvene.
Okay.
All right, so where do we want to start? Kind of like.
Do you want to, like, we can go spreadsheet or tab by tab? So, so we, so we do all the comments together?
Which, is that consolidate? We have a, we have, you have a consolidated list.
Oh, yes, yeah. Yes, so then there are a few feasibility studies, and how we go forward with one could actually affect how we go forward with others based on, so I mean, if we go out for our feasibility study for the fire station, just as an example, we could have an efficiency, some efficiencies in doing more than one feasibility together, but there's also a lot of things up in the air still that we're waiting on in terms of how we approach that as well, but. So in just as, as we started off, I just want to mention as well, like going into next year, so the total FY three cash that we have through our next round is certified is around four hundred and twenty-five thousand that we have, and then we have, that we have outstanding from the November special, and that includes a whole back for contingencies as well, but just wanted to provide that as well.
And I think, you know, from, from our point of view, what we really need to look at is let's just get these things stack ranked, okay? Let's not worry about how we're funding things right now. I mean, when we get to the higher depth that we've already been informed, we're gonna be applying for grants, that's perfectly fine, but but, but I think we really need to look at stack ranking these things. Going through our, our rating sheet here. So I quite honestly can't recall anything, when I, when I was thinking, when I'm looking at this rating sheet right now, I'm looking at the priority classification. Does anybody recall any that were mandatory?
No, I was saying the thing that I can't recall.
Okay. So then everything is gonna fall under maintenance efficiencies or, or new service, right? Okay, so that's good, so we need something out out of this. Where do we want to start?
Since top, point of contact system?
Okay.
I can zoom in a little more, too.
Yeah, I think, go ahead, Jenna.
I was just gonna say, did we have anything that prioritized, like, that was the department's priority? You know what I mean, like to do?
Just in a minute.
Just, okay.
Okay, so.
Yep.
So, so we know this is, so if you look at Board of Health, it's, it's the roll-up containers, and then either, then the attended building, and then you might want to change that.
Swap, we gotta swap.
Just to swap.
Thank you, sure. And you're like, you never knew when I came here, I'm like, what, except I bring with me?
And the last thing is, is, it would be the point of contact system.
Oh, it's in the other one, sorry.
Formula, yeah.
There you go.
Yeah, that's.
So my, my question is, is do we want to be filling out an individual sheet for all of these to aggregate them? Or do we just want
Do one?
Do one per project, and then we kind of
Yeah, and top quality.
And then tell you, I'm in the top.
That's fine, okay.
Okay. So I think. So yeah, so Jen, I mean, you really only need to hold on to one of these, just a point of reference if you want to pass.
Yeah, I can do that.
You want to pass the rest of them back to me, you're gonna record in the
Yeah.
In there, I'll, I'll write it, I'll write it off.
Sure, okay.
Okay, yeah, so okay, so for, for, so first I think we want to do the Board of Health roll-up containers. And we're looking at twelve thousand dollars, right?
Yes.
Is that right?
Yes.
That's right, number. And so this is, this probably falls under maintenance, anybody disagree with that?
I don't disagree.
Okay, so we do that. And priority ranking. I'm not gonna, I, I don't want, I don't always want to be the first one to throw it out because I don't want to bias everybody.
So that was pretty high on that list.
Yeah, on their, on their list, but from a, you, we, we're gonna be tasked with looking at it from a, from an overall town perspective, so we have to think about what we've heard in all the meetings, and in, in, in the reason why, and then just rationalizing through this first one, right? So my thought process, it's just to kind of get everybody kind of knowing where I'm coming from is, I heard, yes, it's really high for the Board of Health. From the town perspective, probably high, it's not very high, right? Because, because it's not the same as replacing an ambulance or something to that effect. But I, I do, I do think it is high. Anybody disagree with that? Have a different opinion, okay? All right, and the expected useful life? I don't know that we necessarily heard that.
Do you have like the sheet that they, somebody put like in?
So like in, just in terms of our point of text, too, the weather solve EVO stands by Tom Pye's on that. So they have, so they have, the water health has, the water health though owns the, so a total of, so a total of eight containers, so in two of them needed repairs.
Right.
No, there's no here.
But I think he said those were pretty old, like in that twelve, fifteen year range, it could turn openly. So, so if that's the case, then I would say that the projected life, yeah, if useful life is gonna be, we can safely say it's two. Right, and, and knowing Tom, he's gonna take care of his equipment, so I'm feeling that that two's a good number for this. All right. Effect on operating and maintenance costs. Well, we're reducing costs because of, because of the, we don't have to get them repaired any longer.
But do, but do we repair them, or do we just let them be?
Cause what to repair this, right?
I think the other two, you know, the two that he's had, he's, Tom says he took, he's been repairing it then along the way, right?
Right, but this is gonna be aggressive.
Right, right, so.
I, I think they have to repair some in the past, yeah, some of the, the lightnings.
Okay.
And they've been well abused, you know.
Yeah. What do we, it's costing, it's costing probably unchanged, unchanged, right? Cause we're no longer paying for repairs, but we're paying for the new container.
Agreed.
All right. Well, let's remember it's not gonna be exact science for us and everything, right? Okay, and then the effect on the town's revenue. Revenue is unchanged, right? So the total score of twenty-nine? Do you, don't you just have that on the, on the, the overall planning?
No, there isn't a, there's not a rating number on this, I have to go back and add it in. No, I thought I did two, but I realized earlier I don't have one. So I have to go back and put it in.
Um, so how, how are we looking at funding this? Going for cash, raise and appropriate.
I said no.
It's not their fees?
Well, their, their fees come back to the general fund, so it's probably six. So probably, yeah, it would have to be free cash.
So I think, yeah, first would it address the significant public safety concern? I'm not interested, no, okay. Okay. All right. I think at this point, we bypassed the other two here. Anybody disagree with that? And the reason being is that, then, you know, based on, on what we heard from the tires in our last meeting is that, you know, the building itself probably woven to highway department feasibility study and the point of, point of, point of contact payment system. We need to look at that more from a overarching point of view for the whole town, where we have different systems in place, we don't have to do them. Okay. So.
Do we move after here?
Yep.
On the DR?
Let's just go to the DR.
So there are really only two things now.
Well, even the first one is, is an impact to FY twenty-two, right, the track and tennis courts. Then we're looking to pay for it out of E and D.
Yep.
So so that's no impact to us, so I would say we don't even have to rate this at this point. If they come back and ask for us and say, hey, we, you know, we, we have E and D, we don't, it's not what we expected, and we need an extra fifty thousand, and then that's something that we would have to deal with.
Thank you.
Okay. All right, so then let's, the feasibility study. A hundred and fifty thousand. And this is probably this is about as close to mandatory as we get. Because we, our, our schools are bursting at the seams. I mean, I would, it may not be mandatory, but that's, that's what I would make it.
Yeah, no, I mean.
Anybody, so, so I hear, I hear a bunch of yeses, we got X's, ten, priority ranking probably ten, right?
Yeah.
Very high. Expected useful life of the feasibility study that's low, right?
Yeah.
The study itself, the result, yeah, well. So, so I, I mean, we do have to go with, with what we have here, so this would be the two, right? Effect on operating and maintenance costs.
That'd be unknown.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Which.
What can we solve if that work pretty much?
Yeah, that's, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Real problem.
Yeah. Yeah, I I mean it it should be reducing costs, it's, I mean, you're not gonna build something that's gonna be inefficient, right? But the uh, um
But the modulars, now do we rep them? Are they rented or we practice them?
No, we rep them somewhere. We probably just repurpose some somewhere else.
Yeah.
But uh, so the effect on operating costs.
I'd say two. I mean, that's a custom change.
Yeah. Yeah.
Like, is a conservative out of out of your middle of the road, so we don't lose the value in meeting?
Yeah, I would agree. Anybody else have a different opinion? Alright, and the effect on the on the town's revenue, tax base, um
Revenue is unchanged.
Yeah.
Alright. You know, I'm thirty two. Uh, this would probably be through
The assessment.
So, well, it'd be an assessment, but it would be uh
Yeah.
but that would that would come through as
Reason appropriate.
We've, have we, I think we've always done reason appropriate for the entire school district, right? Yeah, it's gonna be hard, I mean And with addressing of can public safety concern. There's some yeses there, right?
Yeah, potentially, I mean, if the school is overcrowded.
I mean, we go back to the issues of the egress
Right.
whole thing and the and the needs for the feasibility study to address that in the totality.
Right.
Right.
Oh, I can just punch it afterwards too.
Right. And then what I, I mean, what I would propose after we do all of this for this year is we go back and look at the process.
Mm-hmm.
Because when you when you look at the first two projects we just rated, the fact that a feasibility study for schools where we know we have to do something about it, only scores thirty two points against some roll-off containers that are gonna that that are for us, but it's it's scoring twenty nine points, yeah, we might have to tweak something.
Right, yeah.
Uh, I'm glad we're all on, agreed on that one.
Yeah.
Okay, um, I, so I have a feeling we're gonna have a lot of things that are gonna be like
Oh, yeah, yeah, in some way perfected.
Yeah.
Go to fire.
Ah, yeah.
Yes, okay.
Okay, so for fire.
Same though.
But what we have for twenty three, and we're gonna focus on twenty three only too.
Okay, will we do twenty three?
For now, yeah, for for right now.
Okay.
We 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 can get to to
Yeah, longer.
four in in those in in our next meeting or in two meetings from now.
Okay. That's fine.
Um, I think we need to address
Yeah.
twenty three, cause the budgeting cycle is coming up, right? Um, so so let's talk about the feasibility study there. That was the number two priority thing, right?
One.
I had the self-contained breathing apparatus, number one.
I think that's mandatory too.
Yeah, but he can
Yeah, yeah, you're right, those are those are gonna fall out of compliance, so let's
But so the chief, so they fall out of, so they fall out of N uh NFPA compliance, but we still
Just focus on it.
have the ability, as long as we're addressing them and upgrading them, there is no liability to the town. Uh, so yeah, we did talk about that, I, yeah, like I I did have a follow-up conversation with the chief about that. Again, so he budgets operationally, uh, for the pack upgrades every year as well, where he does a few at a time. But oh, and keeps them upgraded, and as long as he keeps them upgraded, even if they're out of NFPA compliance is good, but like it does break your question that, at some point in the near future, we are gonna reach the end of the useful life.
I thought we were there.
I did too.
Um, let's figure the actual, um
Did he say anything about grants?
Yeah, uh, yeah, but we can't count on grants, I mean, there's possibility of it.
Yeah.
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 Possible. Yeah. So that was let's, I have it, I mean okay, so these are fifteen years old and and out of compliance. So then these are probably ones that we have to get into. So possible grant money.
Mm-hmm.
And if not, then then we're either looking at some grant or free cash or um capital stabilization.
Mm-hmm. But well, we could maybe make an ARPA ask if we whether that need to be addressed as well?
Yeah, I don't wanna uh, really like try to drive out of funding too much tonight, let's figure out what
Okay, yeah, the waiting.
because 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 we're we're gonna, let's see what bubbles to the top.
Okay.
Because whatever bubbles to the top, you might say, yeah, that's an easy ARPA funding source, that's a
Okay, okay.
So so we should, I mean, behind all of these should be, can we use ARPA money?
Yeah.
if we can't, and and then then we go back to the sheet to figure out
Okay.
what what are our possible sources, right? Okay, so for the self-contained breathing apparatus, we're looking at three hundred thousand dollars, um I think this again is, again, you know, like you now mentioned, this is pretty close to being mandatory, right?
Mm-hmm, yeah.
Um, priority ranking. Um
It's the safety of running or, you know, personnel, right?
Yeah.
Um, um, projected, um, project expected useful life, well he says these are coming up on fifteen years old, so I I'm assuming he can get at least ten out of these. That's right, so um operating and maintenance costs, I think the costs are gonna stay unchanged, right?
Yeah.
We still have to maintain them, just like we do our current
Mm-hmm.
equipment, um, and it has no impact on our revenue.
Mm-hmm.
Right? So yeah, see, that one rated, I think, in the high level, this school usability study. But it's just a study, right? It's just a study. It's just a study.
So what you number one number?
Thirty five.
Yeah.
Um, and then, yes, it would
Yeah.
um address the significant public safety concern. Okay, yeah.
Feasibility study?
Yeah. Already a hundred and fifty thousand for that. Okay, so with regards to that the priority, I mean, I think we treat it like we do the schools, right? We heard from the chief that they're using secretary's office at night for a monk house.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm.
Um, you know, things of that nature, so, um I have pictures of my father-in-law sleeping in the ambulance, that was years ago, and that, you can just get that on the job sketch. Um priority ranking, um, I think this is also pretty high.
Mm-hmm.
Um the useful life
Yeah.
probably the same thing, right?
Yeah.
it's a two, right? It's a, just a study.
Yep.
Um, and then the, same with these, right, effects on the operating maintenance costs, five. And and the effect on the town's revenue, five as well, right? And so with that, our funding, uh, our scores
Thirty two.
worked out, yeah, thirty two. Same as same as the schools. Which, you know, you would expect it to, right?
It's
same thing, it's a study.
Yeah.
Um, okay, um, possible funding sources, um probably RNA, right?
Two.
Alright, so what else do we have for fire?
Uh, this year, we get the implants.
Okay. We still have a cost on that, uh
Yeah, it was three seventy five initially, Robert.
Yeah.
Um, since we met last, if I chief reached out to Boron, who is the ambulance apparatus company and they did uh confirm a three twenty five number.
Three twenty five, okay.
Yes.
We're down to three twenty five, okay. Um, and is already no maintenance?
I'd say maintenance.
Maintenance, yeah. Priority ranking.
Say hi.
Did you say they're on a five-year cycle, like they were on every five years?
Um, I Yeah, that's that's, so we're kinda thinking about doing that the same way we do with the, you know, the fleet for the police
Yeah.
cars, um, of course, we don't need quite as many, but no but but to cycle a new ambulance in every five years is is the target. I
I mean, here we're a victim of our own success, because we have a schedule, we don't let it to get on these type of things to a point of no returns. So and that's yeah, that's when the rating sheet I think very high, it's a thing that's falling apart.
Right.
Right. That'd be very high, but it's not, but it's not because we planned for these.
Right, right. Right.
It said high.
Uh, uh, yeah, I mean Alright, so all all those in favor of high?
Also I guess.
Anybody? Anybody, we got media?
Meeting high.
And this is, this is, this is really kind of
Yeah. I think this is meeting high right now.
This is, this is really the kind of the fine tuning that we'll be able to do when we start stacking these these against each other, right?
Yeah.
Yeah. I think, yeah, exactly, right, I think comparison.
So So, okay, um, expected useful life is is number three, right?
Yeah.
Two. Um, and then the effect on operating and maintenance costs really, it's unchanged, right?
Mm-hmm.
Um, yeah. And then the, uh, on our town's revenue, still unchanged.
Mm-hmm, yeah.
Alright, so twenty six, if you get healthy if I'm accurate, um Um, and so this is in terms of funding
Oh, oh, non-free cash, yes, yes and no. My, I love it because given the non-free cash option available, so that's
Yeah. Yes, yeah, I've just been on the forums and putting what what some of those might be.
Yeah.
So this is, this is the ambulance fund, um
Yeah, what was that rating?
Was twenty one, twenty six, it's seven seven two five five.
Seven seven. Two two, okay.
Right?
Yeah.
Yeah. I think once we get these all into our spreadsheet, we'll share the spreadsheet with everybody, it'd be much easier.
Mm-hmm.
Um um that's it for fire for twenty twenty three, right?
Fire. Yes.
On the other part, it's from the Mars overall.
Oh, is that still in there?
It's, so I did talk to the chief about that earlier as well, on where, sorry, I'll check this.
Yeah.
Yes, uh
So he, um
Twenty twenty four is where you go to have to
Yeah, he moved it to twenty year four. Um, and he said that would come before the cruiser. Um, and he also said that in twenty four, he believes where they reach chassis of the of the current truck, he can probably get that down to about half of the initial hundred ninety thousand dollar cost.
Okay.
He was pretty confident in that.
Okay. I'm good with that. Alright, highway.
Yish.
So for these, we probably need to separate out between equipment and maintenance, right? Probably easiest way to talk about these.
Mm-hmm.
Right, so, um, we're talking about it, so in terms of equipment, we have um two dump trucks, right?
I think he said number one was replace the two thousand four.
Yeah, yeah.
Place that at one ton and
Yeah, he's got five, I have, um replacing the O four. And that number is also one seventeen now, is what I
Yeah, one seventy.
Um and then the one-ton dump truck and is the second highest priority, which is down a couple of lines.
Yeah.
Is the second highest, and then the Williams Street paragraph, yeah. So let's talk about the
Two thousand four?
Two thousand four replacement. And we have the one hundred and seventy thousand. Um it's definitely maintenance, right? Um, priority ranking.
I would say very high.
Yeah, that's that's
Yeah. Yeah.
Yeah, based on how I understand how he's shuffling through equipment, he's He's had some equipment issues getting through these storms.
Yep. Um terms of useful life, I'd probably two. Yeah, I would say two, it's a two thousand four, yep. And then effect on operating and maintenance costs.
Same.
Reduce costs, it's a little bit. Yeah, you know, it's this is one of those things where you're reducing costs at the front end, but at the back end, your your those costs are gonna go out. So they kind of, at the end of the day, they're gonna level each other out depending, you know, over the course of, let's say, you get twelve years worth of use out of this.
Yeah.
The first six years, you might have no cost, and the next six years, you're gonna offset those those savings by because you're gonna have to put some money into it, so.
Yeah. Yeah.
That's where I think this, yeah, goes to unchanged, okay. Um and then town revenue, one ton, right?
Only we got life, climate, snow.
Twenty-six, um. So again, um.
Twenty-six you got?
Yeah.
Are you?
Did you get thirty-two?
I did, I got thirty-two as well.
Yeah. Seven-ten-five-five.
Right. Wait, what'd you get, seven-seven?
No, seven-ten.
Yeah, seven-ten.
Oh, you got ten, you got very high on that? Yeah.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, see, I have three nine. So wait, so seven-ten. That's, that was my big mistake. Was circling the five, I'm gonna get two.
Yeah.
Oh, that's a problem right there. Alright, so this is really a ten, okay. Thirty-two, yeah, I can do math. Okay, we know I won't be feeling very stressed. Um so availability of free cash, raise inappropriate state or federal grant money, I think we're really looking at. Yeah. RNA, or. Or stabilization, okay? Um.
Capital.
What happened to this?
Yeah.
Capital.
Yeah.
Mary's side notes.
Yeah. Okay, um would address some of the public safety concern? Do you say yes? Yeah, just because of, you know, you get in the winter, sure, but.
It's a dump truck.
Yeah. Oh, no, that's because it's gonna put everything Kyle Sander and all that.
That's. That's. Okay, so. Dump truck. Yeah.
But I would eat, yeah, so again, 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 so so I have the problem with the, uh, yes, here, I think,
So that's a good, certainly something.
you know, when you compare that to, you know, like, like the ambulance.
Ambulance.
Ambulance, right?
Yeah.
So ambulance, where do ambulance come in at?
We didn't really get that.
Ambulance came in at twenty-six, and this came in at thirty-two.
Yeah.
I'd rather have an ambulance than a town than than a dump truck.
Yeah, why?
I think, I'll, I'll, if the transport needs to the hospital and dump next month.
If we have to go through all of it, yeah, I think we're gonna be missing.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, we.
Yeah. We'll be some of the priority.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And then I think, I think the next time that that we we get together, what we'll do is we'll we'll do some index cards, Mike.
Yeah.
And that way, we can just start shuffling things around and.
Yes, I like that.
And and it's makes it much easier. There's actually a place we could probably do it online, that's but I worry about making it public, not not making it public, but security information.
Okay.
That's all.
Okay.
Um. So. Um. Okay, next one is the.
The one-ton.
The one-ton, so.
Is that a dump truck as well?
Oh, I was working on this. Yeah, I was working on this thing.
Um, oh yeah, but you know.
One-ton.
And that cost is sixty-two-seven-three. Let me deal a new number on that, so um. So does this rate out as much as the dump truck we just did? Is everything the same? Yeah.
So this is a small one, I guess.
Yeah.
Yes, yeah. So it's it's maintenance again, right? And priority ranking.
I would move that to a high. Well, and very high is, I mean, if we had to choose in terms of funding between one or the other.
Right.
In the same fiscal year.
That's how you differentiate for 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 Tom, for highway department, what he expressed his priorities as, yeah?
Yeah.
Yeah, that makes sense.
Yep, um. Useful life, so.
We know with hi.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah. Um so useful life is uh the ten to nineteen years, right?
Yep.
And costs are unchanged. Revenue is unchanged. Twenty-nine, good, that line.
Yeah, yeah.
Um also rates inappropriate or capital stabilization. At this point, um. So again, is this uh public safety?
See, I don't think it is.
Uh, yeah, I was gonna say no.
There's no problem, right? So it's not, what, what?
Yeah, there's a problem.
It is.
Yeah, there would be a problem.
It's small.
It's kind of smaller, doesn't mean that it's not. I mean, you have to answer it, yes, if the other, if the other one's a yes, this one's gotta be a yes.
Yeah.
Okay. Alright, and then the William Street guard rail. Maintenance. This cost is forty-three thousand dollars, right?
Mm-hmm.
Change, I don't want the none, so. Okay, so this is maintenance, right? So seven, priority ranking, um. I think it's still a high. Tom said it was, certainly said it was more important than the other guard rail pregnancy has up there.
Yeah.
It's a high.
Expected useful life. One, twenty years of work, yeah, I think so.
Yeah.
Effect on operating and maintenance costs. Changed, yeah.
Mm-hmm.
Effect on town's revenue, unchanged. Thirty-four. That's the second highest one of all of this. Probably thirty-four, right? Yeah.
Yeah.
Um so this one is also.
Rebuilding program.
Another RNA. More likely. Um would address, you know, if kind of public safety concern, I think the answer is yes, because there's a guard rail.
Yes, yeah.
To put a new one in, it's because it's safety concern. Okay. That's it for highway, right?
Yeah, just one thing, so as we talk about, and especially as we get to the, so looking at everything for FY twenty-three in the tally, so 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 again, if we do, and if we find a way to fund a feasibility study. Uh for one project, we might want to think about looping in another.
Right.
So I just wanna bring, uh even though that's listed on twenty-four, I think we're doing one of them, it may make sense to.
Yeah, I mean, we would certainly be asking you, Mike, to go out and say, give me a quote for what do it cost for a feasibility study for.
Yes.
Fire department or new, you know, fire station, library, and highway. And then you get all the quotes and in the end, you would also say, now give me a quote just for fire and library, and then give me individual quotes on all three.
Yeah. Yeah.
Um and then that's, those are, those are then gonna be our options, right?
Yeah, yeah.
Um the other, only other note I had from the last meeting, Mike, was the Maple Swamp Guard Rail is twenty-twenty-four now.
Okay, okay. So I thought I saved this as we were doing it, but apparently I didn't, I'm sorry. Okay.
Okay. Um. Alright, so next one is historical commission. So for them. Go back to my notes here.
Did it come back different?
Yeah, so we were going to, we asked them to to ask for increases in their operating budget. Um based upon the work that they felt that they could do. Um not that they could do.
Yeah, I did attend that meeting, I really signed for the historical commission. And I didn't think it was feasible that the uh the members do it, I mean,
Right.
this woman, right now, the study is on how is ninety-four houses, we thought if we turn it over ourselves, we'd probably be able to one house a year. So the next goal is a hundred houses, a hundred more houses to to find out the historical significance of the houses, and we don't think the commission members themselves, some work.
But they, they're the ones who are way out identifying what those hundred houses are, right?
Right, but they're not, yes, but they're not doing the research at this, you should see the research. Yeah. Then this woman has been doing on each, on the ninety-four houses, it's amazing. So was my understanding at the meeting, and will will still look forward for the twenty-five thousand for this going to be twenty-twenty-three.
But this is still, but this is still.
For definitely.
But this should still go under their operating budget under professional services. Because because they're hiring out basically a consultant to come in and do the work because we don't have the expertise in in our town government to do that type of work. But it's not, it's not a capital expense, it's it's really an operating expense now in the year.
But is this gonna be ongoing for a hundred and hour?
No, no, because it's only so many houses we have, it's historicals.
Oh, we need to do the fight.
Right.
So.
Yeah, but 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 the house is, every every single year, you advance all those now, now you you know, what what's what's the, yeah, what what's considered historical, is it older than two hundred years right now, or is that?
Well, we have demolition Bible, which says houses over a hundred years, like I said, historical houses, and we have to go through historic commission. So I mean, we may know that the year that the house is built, we don't have all the historical information, and that's what the commission is seeking. I saw for example, the the Smith wall, it's probably four pages, well documented, is the way you get the information on that, on the Smith House, uh Smith uh building.
But but so so my, I guess my question is this, if we know all the houses that are over a hundred years old, and in, and I don't know where that's, is that coming from, the assessor's office?
Some, the assessor's office is not accurate.
Okay, so so regardless, so we we have we have a certain population of houses in town right now that are already a hundred years old or older. Okay, let's let's just for round numbers, say call that five hundred, okay? We've already got those identified. And then as we add on, and and let's say from that five hundred, they're doing the ninety-four in this year. They're gonna do a hundred next year, a hundred the year after, and so on. So then, when they get done with those five hundred, we'll now have five more years, let's say take some five years then, to get it done. In five years, we're gonna have five more years worth of houses that we need to go through this assessment for. So the so the historical commission needs to come up with, a-again, very similar to what we're doing with police cruisers, how frequently do they want to do this study? So is it every five years, is it every ten years? Where then they take the block of houses that age into that hundred-year or older category and start doing those studies. So so we need to get that kind of ironed out with them because it seems silly that if we're going to start investing money in, I mean, my house ain't nothing special, and it's already fifty years old. Okay, it's traditional king house, okay?
We'll be doing a study in that fifty years.
Yeah, but but the question, and and maybe the Bible should be be changing too. I mean, is is a hundred years not historical enough? I don't know, I mean, what's federal registry saying in terms of? Yeah, we regardless, but but regardless of that, right, we go, let's not question the process and procedures, but let's let's figure out. Do we, is this the investment that we want to be making every single year to get up to date? And then what's the cycle after that?
All I can say is that the last time this was done, it was done by two individuals, and it was in the sixties and seventies. So it's been a long time since we've done this, we've lost a lot of houses in town. So this is, we're trying to figure out the old houses, the significant, so for example, demolition Bible goes this, you know, house is gonna be knocked down, it's over a hundred years old, it's not a emergency, it goes to historic commission. If the historic commission feels there's no historical significance to the house, we're probably gonna say, kept down. But what we're trying to do is to find out the historical significance of this stuff. My house happens to be on this list, my house is always two hundred and fifty years old, so it's important that the history of the house, you know, stays for the town forever. So that we, fifty years from now, when I may not be here, uh I don't want my house knocked down.
And 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 I agree with that, but 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 we gotta figure out.
Well, you asked the commission for the five-year plan, you didn't ask for the ten-year, and they were here until meeting before last, I think. And that question probably shouldn't have been asked of them, but I, all I can say is they, they walked out of here, and we had a conversation at the meeting. It's maybe different, you may have heard something different, right?
No, no, I had to say the same, but I think.
They were gonna try, they were gonna try, they did.
Yes, they did.
That's great, that we talked about.
Healthy conversation about it.
So what I'm thinking though is, for each of these years. You're asking for twenty-five thousand dollars for consulting, the only, the only actual tangible, like, non-operating expense that I see here is for the segregated school. Because they want some architectural designs and plans for that.
Right.
Right?
That's that's the, that's definitely, yeah, something we should address, right?
Right, that's your, that's that's got some really historical significance, and it's
Yeah, that's a.
So on the town, right?
So on the public.
So it's, yeah, um so so my question though is, should we just be putting twenty-five thousand dollars in the professional services line? Uh because this is gonna be going on for the next, at least so three, three out of the next four years, and I think, and I think whoever is gonna be doing the these, the study.
Yeah.
Why wouldn't we let that person go for a year so we could get architectural plans done? I I mean, I I agree, the architect, the segregated school needs to be taken care of, but that's separate, that's that to me is the capital expense that we need to to set forth as a town.
Yeah.
But but getting this inventory is something we just need to keep banging away on until we get down to almost nothing.
Alright, hope you're alright.
And then fi- and then at that point, at that point, the historical commission needs to figure out the plan, we're gonna do this every five years? Great, so then then we can start budgeting.
That's just like the assessors, right?
It's like the assessors on the on the.
Yes, yes. On the five thousand.
Reassessment, right? So so we know every, every fifth year, we get a bigger bump up because we have to do a fuller assessment or something that meets the the states guidelines, right? So it's like eight thousand, eight thousand, eight thousand, thirteen thousand, eight thousand, two thousand, eight thousand, thirteen thousand. So but that's what we need to kind of get with 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 the historical mission, commission is, we get all caught up, and then nothing for five years, four years, fifth year, twenty-five thousand dollars. Nothing for four more years, twenty-five thousand dollars. That's what we need to get into.
So yeah, and I would also argue that once we are caught up, and to help get us cut off, and now on that cycle, once we get on that cycle, we have a very clear funding tool in terms of CPA. So like, we don't even have to like rely on the operational budget to do it, because that's the CPA. So like under the four, like under the four allotments that we have, historic is one of them, still in my, even just my view. But I mean, that's exactly and precisely what CPA is for, so we don't have to hit the operational budget for those things.
Right.
Right, I mean, they get the first twenty five thousand was CVC money, they get a grant for half of that, so it only costs twelve thousand, five hundred dollars from CVC. But the second one, they would deny the, the grant.
Yeah, so that's.
So it's almost like I said, they don't wanna do it back to back, right, probably.
Correct.
I even suggested to the historic commission that maybe we go for this every other year, but they necessarily, we, you know, so that we can have, have the price, they wanted, this woman who's doing it, doing an excellent job, we just wanna keep up with the momentum, so hopefully.
Yeah, we, we should always be putting in for grant money, every, every single year, and because the worst thing that happens is we get caught up.
Yes. Right, and that's what happened, they definitely gonna apply for it again.
Um, so. Yeah, yeah, it should be better, we're like doing it every other year though, it should be, we do it every year and if we get told no, that's fine, we're good, we have a funding mechanism in place to get us caught up.
So there's enough on the CPA for historic to do this survey?
Yeah, it's in part of the allotment that you get it specifically for historical budget, yeah.
Oh, yes, right, and so there's enough to cover that.
So if, so I think for historical, we can, and we should, if you wanna take that off, so you wanna do that, yes. Yeah, basically what I'm saying is that, is that we need to go, Mike, if you can take it as you, you'll, you'll look into this, this CPA and make sure, CVC and make sure that we have
Yep. Yep.
enough funds to cover this for this, for this upcoming year. We can address future years, we can go back to the historical commission, see what, you know,
Yeah.
here's, here's what we're thinking now based upon the feedback we got from, you can, uh.
Right, cause each, each department is still gonna come back to us each year, even though, I mean, they could have given us a five year list, but each year, I'll be gonna.
Yeah.
Oh, and hopefully we're getting, you know, Mike's got, hopefully Mike's got a request for twenty twenty four already and
Okay.
you know, because suddenly we found out they needed something, right?
We just started, yeah, yeah.
Right, oh yeah, we needed it.
I mean, I mean, between the time you collected these in November right from now, I mean, that's, that's the message we're trying to send to the department ahead.
For months, yeah. Right.
Do you find out you need something? You let us know, we wanna know, we, you know, we, it's on our list, we have some insight into it.
Let us know.
We can start, so we, then these meetings, we're not rating, I don't know, sixty to seventy dollar project.
Yep.
Where we've already rated this project based upon, and we kind of start, start slotting them in. So then when we do our, our annual budgeting, um, or, or notification to FinCom in terms of our recommendations for projects to fund, we'll, we'll already have those nicely now.
So are you saying then we probably should have to write this for panel?
Yeah, I, I think if it's coming out, especially, if, first off, I think it does belong in operating, operating budget. And then secondly, if it's gonna be covered anyways by CVC, CVC, then, then we don't have to fund it, so it's not under the waters, right?
Yeah.
So, and, and know that, I mean, I think, can you, how is that? You can, you can tell by my tone of voice that I'm, I'm on board with, I know the segregated school, I'm, I'm all in favor of doing the whole
Yeah.
comprehensive study in anyways, but just with, but yeah, yeah, where, where do these, in what bucket do these belong, right?
Right.
Yeah.
Yeah. Right. I think it's important that we know that this is what they're seeking, but not necessarily as a capital expense, right?
Hmm, yes.
Yeah.
Yeah, then I start money in the CVC, yeah, use it for that.
Yes, yeah.
Same, so segregated schools and.
That's twenty five thousand. No, that, now I'm gonna be, but we, that's twenty five, yeah, that's a couple of years away, so we're not.
But we could also, I believe, I'm not, I mean, and we would need to check in to see if a CPA fund is good fund for a feasibility study, I don't wanna speak wrongly there, but again, I mean, oh yeah, I, I'm sorry to come up with plans, I'm sorry, the architectural design plans, but I, I think they could, and even though, but even, that is a real and clear capital need. So like even though that would be rated by, so the I committee when the time was appropriate, when we get to ranking out, uh, to twenty five, but I mean, practically speaking, that request also would make it CVC as well. Are you ready to move on to IT?
Yes.
So this should be an easy one. Um, so I don't, that's just my perspective, based on the outline that I provided. So in terms of IT, there's some stuff there, I'm in terms of what went into the twenty seven, one fifty five. Um, but, um, we got the grant for the fifteen thousand. So I mean, I think until we, just my feeling, until we come up with a real, I think a real inventory, a real plan related to IT, it doesn't make any sense.
Yeah, and it's targeted for twenty four anyways, I think is what we modified it the last time
Yep. Oh, that's, I'm sorry, yep.
because of the information that they had, so. I don't know.
Okay, lovely.
So library.
What we do?
Right now? We've been talking about meetings.
Right. It's almost twenty years.
Lovely.
Alright, feasibility study. Does this come out like all the other ones? We have forty thousand. Pretty much made it, but yeah, because we, again, we're, we're, we're kind of losing our accreditation, you know, to do something, right? So. Um, priority ranking, I think pretty high. Uh, expected useful life, and I give it a two. So we give all our other feasibility studies and the, um, five for the next two, right?
Hmm hmm. Hmm hmm.
These are unchanged.
For the third juror, right?
Yes, sir. Like with the X, so the R A, um, so we address a significant public safety concern.
Well.
It's not, it's not, it's not a public safety, it's a public concern, it's not a public safety concern.
Not totally. Yes.
Yeah.
Um, so, I think the answer is no, but I think we all recognize the importance of
Yeah, yes.
getting something done, um.
Hmm hmm. Okay, on the library?
Yes.
It's kind of a loaded question, sorry.
Yeah. Okay.
These are the real three issues right here for twenty three.
Yeah.
And I, and as I think everyone is aware, the north bank playground is actually making its way to CVC at the moment. So. I think it's too early to tell what their recommendation is gonna be. Oh gee. If I could also say one other thing because I can't stop talking. The twenty three for tricentennial is definitely not realistic.
Right, well, so, if we look at our, our minutes from the last meeting.
Hmm hmm.
He, Kevin says that there are three media projects, right? So, it's the parking area at Lane Field, um, the parking area at the courts, and the parking area at school lane. So, we're looking at.
So with that, twenty twenty four.
Well, I think what, what he did is he moved those up because he's giving, he's, he's seeking grant, uh, grant funding for, for all the, all the other big, big ticket items. And, um, and so he wants to he would like to get these three things addressed immediately though. So. We treat each one of these differently in terms of the paving projects.
One more second. I'll just send that off Zoom.
We make the problem at the same time. We get it enterprise, probably. Cause then it's wrong space, I think.
Request.
Though I think practically speaking, there is a good chance, based on the grant that we got for the other projects, that they'll be done before the end, they'll be paved before the end of the, so the walkways will be paved before the end of the fiscal year. So the funding cycles of when the town meeting um, is will happen at the end after the walkway is paved. That's my worry, but it's probably because I think he just tried to get into Zoom, one second. Hey Brad.
Yeah, this is called Zoom or anything else? Okay. Okay, um. So we have to wrap it in the courts.
Yeah.
So the priority ones are the paving for the, for the
Did that land?
Uh, court facility, you know, school lanes, that would that's the, that's.
This is Lane Field Parking, thirty three thousand dollars, yeah, here's a quote. Yeah, everything got quoted together, it looks like, so tennis courts, twenty four thousand.
We have.
The tennis courts, yeah.
There's only three things.
We took the three together then.
So why, why are there four court zones? I mean, four, on his request, there was four.
It's thirty three five.
This paper.
Thirty three.
J, Mans paper.
Twenty four.
So I'm confused, I guess.
So the three numbers would be, yeah, the thirty three, twenty four, and eighteen nine.
So this, this was the twenty three, then was something else.
Oh yeah, that was, that was for the old police station. At twenty three, six hundred, is the old police station. And we announced that have that paved.
Okay.
And I think, I think this was a quote to do there.
That's. The whole area.
Hmm hmm, yes.
Yeah.
So you just wanna do the, the.
You just gonna do the.
I was near the courts.
Oh, we're near the courts, yeah, and then at Lane School and then at, at, um, at school lane. You wanna do the hall as one, Ken?
I think so, we're near.
I think so too, I think it's.
We better run for the asphalt block as well.
Yeah, yeah, cause if we start breaking these, uh,
Yeah.
and who knows if that company would give us
Yes.
the same price, right? So this is paving, relocations. And this is seventy seven, seventy seven approximately. Alright, maintenance, right?
Yeah.
Priority ranking, I think it falls in the high category. Almost, I mean, I, I'd be tempted to almost say very high too because of the ADA stuff.
Yeah.
Um, I, I have no problem putting it as a ten. Very high?
But, so technically for addressing, I hear what you're saying, but if we're addressing the EDA stuff for the pass, technically we're addressing the compliance issues through the grant. But this would just bolster and dilute it with what we're doing through the grant. I mean, focusing, if a client can sell this, then we're addressing accessibility, we're already doing it to another part of money, so I would say high.
Okay. I follow that, one, thank you. Uh, protected useful one.
Two. Plus with three, I don't know. I'm not all over the class, I don't know.
I haven't tested, I haven't tested my driveway in seventeen years, and it's still holding up, so, but it's gonna crack, so. So I think mine's a few, but it's, it's still, it's still in good shape. I mean, I, I would, I would say we're, we're at two. Um, I would, I mean, I would expect over the years, we're gonna do maintenance, like, things like that, so I'm not too worried about
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
it lasting less than the ten to nineteen. Um, costs are unchanged, right? Well, actually, it would increase costs, right, with seal coating. This is one of them, I feel. And then on the town's revenue unchanged, right?
Yep.
Twenty six. Um, we've already looked at grant money, right?
Yes.
And so that's not a funding source, but. Probably R A, would address significant public safety concern?
I don't.
I don't think it's significant.
Yeah.
Again. When we, when we start looking at all the projects together, it's, that's probably one of the.
Yep. That's it.
Thank you. Um, yeah, we're, we're thinking it's probably gonna be an R A.
So, um, also, so, so, so apparently the agricultural commission also set up a meeting uh, for seven o'clock in the same Zoom room, so I did buy about another twelve minutes.
Okay, okay, alright.
If that's okay.
Yeah, let's, let's get through, I think the next.
I think we're.
This is easy, right? You can have, uh, a cruiser, and the other one is to repeat his portal videos.
Yes. Yeah. Yeah, that's all addressed.
That's.
Yeah.
So we only have one thing, and then seal coating is in twenty three as well.
Yeah, okay, so, so we have.
Four zero point.
So the, the police, which is just the one cruiser, right, this year?
Yep.
And it's.
Seven?
Uh, maintenance, yeah?
Yep.
High.
Yep.
Useful life, I don't know, how big's our fleet now?
The minimum.
We're over a dozen, right, so we're cycling through.
Yeah, I'd say five to nine.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So seven, seven.
You think it's two, you think it's only five to nine? I think we've got at least a dozen, if we're only replacing one cruiser a year, we've got a fleet that's twelve, that's at least twelve cars, that means we're making our cars last twelve years. So I, I think that's a five.
Yeah, no, you're telling me that.
I know we got more than twelve cars, though, too. Um. Check them, operating and maintenance costs, unchanged, right, and it's that whole
Yeah.
less costs upfront, more costs, you know, with the, yeah, what it changes, right, you know, but we have that every year, so it's not really changing anything.
Right.
Um, and town revenue unchanged, right? So, twenty nine. This is typical down through R A.
Ten point now to R and A.
Um. Address a significant public safety concern, would you say any ambulance?
I think it's a yes.
I would say yes.
I don't think it raises that well at all.
Yeah.
We did say yes.
You said right now?
Yeah, I don't think our cruiser raises to the same priority as the ambulance. In terms of addressing public safety concern, I just think. Principally, I think if we go down that boat, it's gonna be hard to come back.
I would also, I would also say this, if if we had to forego a cruiser this year. It would still operate, so operational vehicle in our fleet, right?
It should be. Maybe it would.
I mean, but but yeah, so so in that sense, it's not. A concern. Signi- certainly not significant, okay, and then the the seal coating, right? Is the other one?
Yep. Maintenance. So seven.
Yeah.
I think it's a high priority, so we keep our investment there.
Yeah.
So fourteen.
When was the last time you did the town hope? Recently.
We're just paved a couple of years ago.
Sealed?
Yeah. Paved, I don't know if it was sealed, it wasn't sealed, but it was paved.
But I.
And yeah, I mean, I my general take on these is that if you do it, it's it's a high priority, because if you don't do it. Then then we then we start seeing D, D starts going going up, right?
So. Mm-hmm.
So, um, expected useful life is pretty low, actually, right?
Yeah, because the next one will be scheduled in twenty six.
Yeah, so this is, this is almost, it's a zero, but I don't have that. So we'll put, we'll give it a two. Just to be fair, um. Effects on operating and maintenance costs, right?
Actually reduces costs.
Right, I I would say that it reduces costs. And then town's revenue. No change. So thirty one.
Yeah.
Yeah, we're gonna be a little wonky. No, on the public safety concern, right?
No. I think sewer is the last one.
Yeah, right. But sewer.
I thought they weren't gonna come to the.
Yeah, sewer doesn't have anything in twenty three.
Oh, you're right, sorry, yes.
Um, and in twenty four, that's everything for them comes out of their. Enterprise.
Yeah, you go for, so for the purpose of showing we have a capital plan, though, shouldn't we rate it?
I don't think we need to, I don't I don't even think we need to rate it, because we can just say expected, we can have a category that's that says.
By the way, the time comes. Okay.
Um, additional capital outlay with dedicated funding or something to that effect. Or or with with identified funding, and this is where we should be listing, I mean, when we give a report at the town meeting. We should go through.
Mm-hmm.
And and first off, recognize every grant that we've gotten and what we've done with that money.
Also.
Yep.
Okay, and then and and as a part of that. We should also then be giving them an update, the townspeople an update on. You know, here's what your, you know, from the sewer department.
Mm-hmm.
You know, here's. You know, here here's their recovery, you know, they're investing in the town.
Yep.
As well.
Yep.
Um, and here are some of the capital improvements that they've made and. That. That funding source is through the sewer enterprise, not through this this, the town's operating budget or or capital budget.
But do we recommend?
No, we never, we actually never, we don't, we don't, we don't do, Fincom has never done a recommendation on.
Anything sewer.
Anything sewer, we we look at their bottom line, and they tell us, these are our expected revenues, these are our expected, expected operating capital expenses. And we look at them and we just say. Sewer commission looks like it's gonna be in the green this year, so we're we're good with that.
So just principally, I don't disagree with, uh, at all, this is like the door can be, are you actually thinking about all this? But. But one can make the same exact argument that we just made on the ambulance fund.
Yeah.
Funding an ambulance.
But the ambulance fund is a um fund that is. Un falls under the purview of the town and and everybody in this room to. Make sure that it is being spent on what it's intended to be spent on, the sewer enterprise is its own entity itself. Ambulance fund just falls, is is an account that falls under the town, under the the town's purview.
Yeah, no, I don't disagree with them, yeah. Yeah, I mean, I think it's like splitting kids at the end of the day.
Yeah.
What kind of happens.
Well, they would just have to convince town meeting that they need all those things.
And of course, I mean, the sewer, the sewer, the 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 sewer enterprise has its own set of meetings and everything where they.
I didn't do the right. Mm-hmm.
Present their budget, right? And 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 then I'm asking this because I don't, I'm not on sewers, so I don't worry about that stuff, so.
So.
But that, but I I think that's, you know, similar to how the town runs, and you know, this, anybody who's in, you know, in the sewer district, right? They have a say in what's being done with that money.
So it's a balancing act, though, because if God forbid something hits the fan, like when D O R, like when they, like when when they go below what. A healthy retained revenue should be. Like when the D O R reaches out, and like the water district, they reach out to the town and die in. So, I mean, it is ours, uh, so we own it as a town if it falls apart. I mean, I'm not saying that well at all, because the retained revenue is, like, is there and it's. And it's solid, but. But I don't disagree with what you're saying, David.
So we'll we'll figure that out, that's a, that's a counter.
Yeah, no, it involves.
But yeah.
No, no, that makes sense.
Yeah, I don't think we need to solve for it tonight. Maybe something like.
Yeah, no, these are like the wonky discussions that I'm having anyway, so.
Right. Yeah.
Okay, so.
Ben.
Do you want to send next meeting?
Yeah, probably should, we have to get something coming before.
Paul.
We have to look at the bylaw.
Yeah.
Okay, um. Alright, so. When do we want to have our next meeting? We wanna go three weeks out? Um, that give us enough time to.
Okay.
Get the last seven minutes plus the seven minutes plus get, um, maybe, um.
Yes.
Mike, what you could do is is share the link to this.
Yes.
Cell file.
Yeah, right.
When it's all updated with with this, um. So three weeks out from today. The eighth, yeah, Mike, you can't make it.
Okay.
Yeah, it's not your kid's birthday?
It's.
Oh shit, sorry.
Yeah.
Yeah, that'll be bad. Yeah, you guys.
We just had that conversation.
Thank God. Yeah. Yeah, definitely that.
Yes.
Thank you, Ken, thank you, Ken.
It's also a day that Mike started.
Oh.
Yeah.
It's a day after Mike's birthday, so I, that's why I.
So, um, so so. Um, I don't know what days of the week are are.
Thank you. How about the tenth, that same week, but the Thursday?
Thursday, um. I mean, I I know I could do it.
That's, that works for me.
Thank you, actually.
I think it's okay.
I'll be back with the key list. Oh, I have a friend's meeting.
Oh, okay.
Okay, okay.
I just put on my phone, you have to.
How about the, um. That's my favorite.
Mine too.
It is, it is Thursday.
How many March fourteen?
I'll be in Empress, but I can zoom.
Okay.
I'll be away.
Oh, yeah, oh, yeah, yeah.
If that's where you remember, and married is not zoomed in.
So just to, just to let you all know what we just rated tonight. One point five million. Just remember that three hundred twenty five thousand of that's the ambulance itself. Kind of, and so, so this is. And then after that, then we have the.
It's that, so we're going up to.
Yeah, huh?
How about Thursday, March third?
Uh.
Yeah, March third.
March, March third?
Yeah, that'll carry them on?
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
Same time, right, five thirty?
Yeah, yes.
Okay. Alright, uh, so we're at seven twenty six, um. Let's, let's see, we can't wrap this up, so we need to get it started, um. So approval of the meeting minutes, um, we all had a chance to raise questions, any corrections, additions, deletions? Motion, I need, I need a motion to approve the motion. Motion to approve has been made, do I have a second? But in second, my listen favor.
Aye.
Aye.
Let's make the motion here adjourned.
Listen has been made to adjourn, do I have a second?
Second.
Meeting adjourned, seven twenty six, yeah, thank you all.